Recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Duggar.
I am here.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg, I can see you online.
Here.
Counselor Hassan.
Here.
Counselor Kimmy.
Here.
Counselor Teeter.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here.
Counselor Tibdon is absent tonight.
Okay, so on tonight's agenda, we will have visitor comments, we'll have our first city manager's report, we have a few items on consent, items on the contract review board, we have in two public hearings and a work session this evening. So tonight, we're going to start with public comment. As a reminder, public comment is an essential part of local government and how we function. However, this is not a time for dialogue, this is a time for us to listen. If follow-up is needed, our city manager and recorder are taking notes. With that, everyone will have two minutes to address the council this evening, and we have Lucy Simmons up first.
Hi, can you hear me?
Okay, great.
Hi, my name's Lucy, and I'm the Outreach Coordinator at Homeplate Youth Services. Our team is based here in downtown Beaverton and works with youth across Washington County who are experiencing housing instability or homelessness. I'm highly disturbed that fellow community members are weaponizing the recent tragic death of a houseless neighbor to advocate for the closure of vital, sometimes life-saving services, and I am further sickened by the invocation of, quote, "our most vulnerable children" to push for these shifts. I'm here today to paint a different picture and advocate the investment towards supportive services to address homelessness increase rather than decrease. There are two things we can all agree on: there are very real gaps in the shelter and housing systems across our community, and second, the recent death in City Park was a horrific tragedy. However, preventing further tragedy is not as simple as closing or moving a shelter. These problems within our systems will not be solved by diverting funds away from housing and shelter services. Instead, these so-called solutions would only hide the continued reality that many residents of Beaverton navigate every single day. That reality is that thousands of individuals and families who call Beaverton home, experiencing housing instability every year. At Homeplate in 2023, we saw a 90% increase in youth contacted by our street outreach team, while our staffing and funding failed to match pace. Beaverton School District continues to report one of the highest rates of student homelessness across the state. Based on a 2021 ODHS assessment, there is an approximately $130 million gap statewide in addressing youth homelessness. The reality is that adults were once children. If we aren't investing to prevent and intervene in youth homelessness, as well as adult homelessness, it is more likely that those youth will then grow into chronically homeless adults. I will end by saying that, in the past year, I have personally known four amazing human beings under the age of 25 who are experiencing homelessness and died tragic, preventable deaths. These are our community's most vulnerable youth, and these are the young people we should be focusing on when considering changes to our housing and shelter systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Next up, Alex H., and on deck, John Hacker.
Can everybody hear me? We are here today because of a tragedy. But the tragedy that has triggered this meeting was not the untimely death of that man, but the cruelty of some of our neighbors. Neighbors who, time and time again, demand an escalation of the systemic violence inflicted upon our other neighbors who find themselves unhoused. Violence that financially benefits the comfortable at the expense of the impoverished. We are here because the same religious organization that regularly attempts to interfere with the reproductive rights of our community members is here to pretend that emergency shelters and social services are the root causes of poverty. We are here because of our failure to prioritize people who need homes over the ambitions of those whom profit from the owning and leasing of homes. We are here because we, as a society, prioritize the right of some people to have seven homes over the right of others to have a home at all. And when our collective failures inevitably produce the tragic results we see, the answer from some is always to engage in collective punishment of the victims of our failures. To strip away what little services are available, forcibly displace them with armed agents of the state, and to offload the problems we refuse to address within our own communities unto the communities of others. Frankly, I find it abhorrent that yet again, the feelings of people who go to sleep each night in warm beds with full bellies are being prioritized over the life-saving services that human beings need. We do no service to children by sheltering them from the problems we insist upon sweeping under the rug. While the people in the city of Beaverton cannot by ourselves solve the issues fundamental to the structure of our society, we have a choice: to be part of the problem, or to be part of the solution. Thank you.
John Hacker.
Hey, my name's John. I want to express my disappointment with the mayor's opening remarks last meeting related to the death of Sayad Ali. I also want to express disappointment that almost every person who testified last meeting were from St. Cecilia, and that the town hall last night, again, was monopolized by the same people. I find it comical that the police had to state out loud that they are not security for the Catholic school. It's hard to imagine if a group of people who weren't as wealthy as people affiliated with a private school that they would be given the same weight. Now to the comments by the mayor, related to Measure 110. This is not a time to scapegoat about Measure 110 just because it's politically expedient or appeases reactionary nimbies. People in recovery and advocates like me, I forgot to state, I've been in recovery for 17 years, I'm a former addiction counselor and peer mentor. People in recovery and advocates like me have been sounding the alarm bells here in Oregon for almost a decade because we've ranked almost dead last in access to treatment and have had some of the highest rates of substance abuse in the United States. We have made very little progress over the years due to the lack of expansion of treatment, detox, and recovery services. Measure 110 has only improved the accessibility of treatment and recovery services, but there are still waitlists everywhere. We need more beds. To make things worse, we experienced a pandemic that impacted every area of our lives, and fentanyl started flooding our drug market in the region in 2019. Make no mistake, fentanyl is the result of the war on drugs. It's cheaper, more powerful, odorless, and hard to detect. Fentanyl was a response to drug enforcement and the need to evade that detection while increasing profits by cartels, et cetera. Fentanyl has now moved from the East Coast and the Rust Belt into our region to replace, almost fully replace, our heroin drug market. This makes everything so much more deadly. The same spike in deaths occurred when addicts switched to heroin from OxyContin, and before that, there was a spike in deaths due to Purdue Pharma's unethical business practices that helped kill tens of thousands of people. I've lost lots of people to addiction, and most before Measure 110. The severity of the opioid drug crisis has a direct connection to Purdue Pharma deregulation, lack of treatment, prevention, and criminalization. Thanks.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. I have just a brief city manager update for you, and we'll get the slides up shortly. Just four things to share with you, and if we'll go to the next slide, a little bit of a delayed thank you, and we'll wait for the technical assistance here shortly. All right, very good. If we can go to the next slide, thank you. We just wanted to extend, one, a thank you to the community, appreciated the community's patience as we work to restore normal operations after several days of maintaining essential and remote city services. But more importantly, a special thank you, a public thank you to our city teams who absolutely did a stellar job and worked around the clock to keep our community safe. And for those that are wondering, you know, what happens behind the scenes, we serviced hundreds of calls that week, plowing, sanding streets, clearing down trees, which you can see from the picture that's shown, responding to burst pipes throughout the city, and of course, making wellness calls, opening a warming center at the library, and then, of course, working to restore power at multiple city facilities. So we hope that you'll join me in recognizing the stellar work. And we've also recognized that there was a number of emergency preparedness tips that we also wanted to provide the community. So I'm encouraging folks to go to www.beavertonoregon.gov and check out our emergency preparedness page with some tips that we learned along the way, and we'll continue to update those as we go along. So we did learn quite a bit, and we appreciate the community's support. The next slide, we've got some year-end numbers that I'd like to share with you. These are focusing on both the city library and the police department. The library ended a year 2023 with more than 2.6 million checkouts of physical and digital materials, making it the highest circulation in the region of WCCLS libraries. That is amazing. And Washington County Cooperative Library Services circulated a total of more than 10 million items system-wide, and that includes about 16 public library locations. So these are really significant numbers and just a stellar job of the work of our library. And then for BPD, they contributed to some significant regional efforts by removing 527 impaired DUII drivers from our highways and seizing 65 pounds of powder fentanyl and more than 1 million pills. So just a thank you to those that are working hard to support our community and keeping it safe. Next slide. So this may look familiar, this is our North Transmission Line intertie, and work is beginning on what I'll call the NTLI. It's important water infrastructure that some residents may not know about. It provides a secondary water supply to our community in the event of a major earthquake or another type of emergency or maintenance need. And currently, the city only has one single water supply line provided by what's called the South Transmission Line, which was not built to seismic standards, and so we're trying to correct that with a new 24-inch transmission main called our North Transmission Line that will be seismic, excuse me, resilient and provide important connection to existing water supplies like the Joint Water Commission. So the route that we are working on in terms of laying the pipe begins along southwest 170th Avenue at TB Highway, continues on through Walker Road towards Highway 26. If you're looking for more information, we also got a pretty cool video, go to beavertonoregon.gov/NTLI. And the last slide, the most important is our State of the City. We want you to join us on Monday, March 4th, at The Reaser at 6:00 PM. Attendees are going to have a chance to look at all the different successes that shaped the city over the past year and what's to come in 2024. So you can get more information at beaverton.gov/sotc, and tickets are available at Theracer, www.thereacer.org. So we really encourage you to come. Tickets are free, available in advance, so first come, first served, so we hope to see you all there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that Logan's not in the audience. Okay. With that, council president, consent agenda, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make two comments. One thing on the consent agenda was the Greater Good Northwest Contract, so we're seeing good work that the social services work that we're doing in the library. I think that's really a great first step around a lot of what's happening. The second piece, just on the contract award for the Transportation System Plan update, I know that city manager shared that we're hiring this consultant, and it sounds like there'll be four public pop-up events. I just bring that up because when those events happen, I think it's important that we're sharing them out to our respective communities as well. So as we get more input on our transportation system plan, making sure that we're continuing to communicate to the constituents what's happening. Thanks.
Will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Council President Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Duggar, 601.
Yes.
I think you had a vote before you counted it.
Sorry.
I mean, it wasn't the affirmative.
601.
Yeah. You voted yes, right? Okay. She just knew, she channeled how you were going to vote, so. Okay, well, now we're going to move on to two public hearings. Council president, get your script out. You're in the big boy's chair tonight. Ready to follow along? All right, this is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance repealing Section 2.03.170 through 2.03.178 of the Beaverton Code relating to the Audit Committee. I now call to order the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. Each person who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comment, council members may ask the question of the speaker. When all public comment has concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision regarding the proposed ordinance. Is there a staff presentation?
Good evening, mayor, councilors. What we have tonight is a public hearing to repeal a section of the code that relates to the Audit Committee. And the stuff, the Agenda Bill explains the background and the history and why we are repealing the Audit Committee, but we're happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions of the staff? City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak on the proposed ordinance?
There is no one online, and we did not receive any written public comment.
All right, there appears to be no members of the public who wish to comment on tonight's matter. I will now close the public hearing. The city council may either adopt the proposed ordinance or take other action, but if other action is proposed, the motion must include specific direction as to what the other action is. Is there a motion?
Yes, mayor. I move that the council adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 23278, an ordinance repealing Sections 2.03.170 through 2.03.178 of the Beaverton Code relating to the Audit Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Duggar. Any discussion? All right, we are ready to vote. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy, or Council President Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
601.
All right, this is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance amending Beaverton Code Chapter 8.02 relating to the adoption of state-specific codes and the International Property Maintenance Code into Beaverton Code. I now call to order the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak at the hearing should follow the instructions including on tonight's agenda. Each person who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. After each person's comments, council members may ask questions of the speaker. When all public comment has concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful in their decision, to make their decision regarding the proposed ordinance. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, there is.
Let's do it.
It's very short. So this is the amendment to Beaverton Chapter 8.02. Some background, in 2019, the State of Oregon Building Codes Division amended its administrative rules that no longer permitted local building officials to use state administrative rules to enforce local ordinances. The city quickly amended Beaverton Code Chapter 8.02, 8.02, to continue allowing the city's building official, and by the way, I'm sorry, I'm Kimberly MacArthur, and I'm the city's building official, I should have said that at the beginning.
Who are you?
Continuing, continue allowing the city building official to continue enforcement of the building codes locally. After a more comprehensive review, staff is now requesting the city to complete a second and final set of amendments to Chapter 8.02 to continue enforcement of building codes locally, and to adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, which is a shift. And that's it. Thank you.
Council, any questions of staff? Counselor Teeter.
I've got a question about Section 8.02.100, and it's about prohibited deposits and spillage. And I'm curious, this focuses mostly on dumping of earth or gravel or spillage of anything that could leak onto the public right-of-way. Does this also apply to storage of construction materials or staging in the public right-of-way? Would that be enforced here or through a different code or document?
Through here.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
There is no one to speak, either online or no written testimony for this ordinance.
All right, there appears to be no members of the public who wish to comment on tonight's matter. I will now close the public hearing. The council may either adopt the proposed ordinance or take other action, but if other action is proposed, the motion must include specific direction as to what other action is. Is there a motion?
Yes, mayor. I move that the council adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 23279, an ordinance amending Beaverton Code Chapter 8.02 relating to the adoption of state specialty codes and the International Property Maintenance Code into Beaverton Code.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's motion? Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Council President Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
601.
All right, we are on to our first work session of the evening, Agenda Bill 23280, fiscal year 2425, work plan for city council priorities with the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. We're just waiting for the presentation. All right, if we go to the next slide. All right, we can talk about our desired outcomes. There are three for this evening. I'd like to result with our meeting that we had, our annual report that we presented through our council goals that we do once a year. We'll go through the established council direction on those priorities, present a work plan to you, and you can provide some feedback on that, and then we'll talk about next steps, and this will come back to you for official approval on a consent item later on within maybe mid-spring. So we move to the next slide, you'll see a graphic of your goals and priorities, and just to orient the audience, the council's adopted eight goals, and those goals range from inclusive community all the way to community wellness and fun. And those goals really help us serve as the rudder for staff and the day-to-day operations and how we go about doing our work and how we prioritize our work. And the council identifies key priority areas that they would like the city to focus on, and they are usually items of high visibility. And this year, the council identified four different areas for the community and the organization to focus on, and those range between diversity, equity, inclusion of belonging, or DEIB, community and organizational well-being, financial recovery, and natural resources. And so the next slide, please. And so what I've done is I've identified key projects that I'd like to discuss with you at a pretty high level, and then we also have staff here that will be able to answer any kind of technical questions that you have. And so I'll begin with DEIB. So we have three kind of goals that we want to focus on underneath this category. The first is cultivating a culture of belonging and wellness. This is really an opportunity for us to focus on creating a strong sense of belonging, not only within the community, but really an intentional focus on the organization. Some examples of that would be focusing on what we have as employee resource groups and expanding that. We also want to make sure that we are attracting a segment of our organization that tends to be unrepresented, and so that they have a place and a time to identify issues of importance in the organization. The other is that creating not only an employee DEI speaker series, but one that also the community can get around, and will be working with our commissions, our resource and library to be able to promote that as well. The other is expanding our City of Beaverton University and Connect Program. We have another other number of related training programs that we really want to come along and help support education around DEIB. Many of these things are underway. We also, just as a reminder, we will be coming back to council on a quarterly basis so that you can know about the progress that we're making in all of these areas. The other item under this category is the nonprofit incubator implementation. As you know, we've identified a physical space for the nonprofit incubators, includes offices on the third floor here. We are working with the Oregon Startup Center, and we are using Impact Beaverton to deliver this support for the incubation of nonprofits. We've already identified, of course, Impact as our resource for this. We have a cooperative agreement that's been signed between OSC, which is the Oregon Startup Center, and the City of Beaverton. We have a subcontract agreement assigned between OSC and the Chamber, and that is for Impact Beaverton. We've already started some programming for nonprofits, and the center improvements are continuing to progress, and so we'll keep you up to speed on that. The last item under this category is the multicultural center gap analysis and needs assessment. And as you know, the primary objective around this is to conduct a comprehensive gap analysis on knowledge and capacity, aiming to ensure that we have a sense of belongingness and connectedness for immigrants, refugees, and other key stakeholders that are facing inequities in Beaverton. And so we have a request for information that will be solicited within, I think, the week, and we're estimating a completion of that process by 2024, and we'll come back and give you the results of that. And then we will go out for more than likely an RFP, which will identify who those key stakeholders are that can respond to the assessment. Usually, you do an RFID to see kind of what's out there, and so that's our first step in the process. And then I'd like to go to the next slide so we can talk about community, organization, and well-being. There's four different items under here. The first, obviously, is an important one, so focused on houselessness and safety initiatives. We have several initiatives that are going to be developed to address not only the impacts of houselessness, but also sometimes the safety issues that we've identified in downtown Beaverton. And so some examples of what falls under this category is, of course, completing the permanent shelter, reviewing the new shelter providers, operating protocols, and making sure that we have an update of all of our Good Neighbor Agreements. And then the other is expanding our safety footprint in downtown, and as you're aware, we're working to expand the bike team to coverage about seven days a week. The other piece is that we really want to make sure that we're identifying homeless access center options, too. That'll be a key process for us, and we're looking at providing you some options around potential pilot programs. The other is that we are moving forward with the advancement of the Senior Affordable Housing Project, and that will replace what is currently known as the Community Center or Temporary Shelter on Fifth. And then we're also looking to install additional cameras at the main library, and we want to do an implementation of a safety assessment. And so once we get through that, we'll bring four of those results to you. The other note I just wanted to clarify is that we do have an allocation anticipated for the proposed budget for the expansion of the bike team. That's approximately around $188,000. We will bring a supplemental budget adjustment for the current year for you, and that'll just be a quarter of that cost, and that'll come up to you this spring as well. The second is organizational development initiatives. We have one highlighted here because this actually rises to the case of being highly visible in the organization. It's something that will touch everyone in the organization, not just management, but people boots-on-the-ground that are delivering core services every day. We want to focus on process improvement, after-action process, kind of check-ins, change management, professional development. The goal here is really, we want to make sure that the people that are doing the everyday work are empowered to be able to pivot in the moment and make really good decisions, and looking how to provide services to our residents in the most efficient way. This really does tie in with your fiscal sustainability initiatives around efficiencies. So we're really looking forward to having a cross-citywide effort on trying to empower all of our staff to be able to think and shift their mindset a little differently. We're already planning for two four-day sessions of about 24 staff members in each session, and we've got those planned for this spring and '24. We have a number of other initiatives, and when this comes back to you, we'll provide some examples of those as well, just to let you know, this is probably the one that we will put resources towards and why we wanted to elevate it to you because of that. The next item is transportation initiatives to enhance economic development, accessibility, and safety. The first, of course, is the Transportation System Plan Update. For those of you that aren't familiar with this, the Transportation System Update was adopted in 1997 and was last updated in 2010. And so what we'd like to do in terms of desired outcomes on this is, we'd like to provide a clear and up-to-date transportation vision statement, goals, policies, and performance, particularly around metrics. We'd like to do an analysis of Beaverton's current transportation system in relation to who the system is serving, how well it's serving them. We want to identify the transportation needs across the city and where those opportunities lie. We want to identify the transportation needs across the city and where those opportunities lie, and then a prioritized investment strategy of how we're going to get there. We're already doing the scoping for this project that's underway, also doing the consultant selection and an advisory committee formation. And overall, the estimated completion for this project is going to be around in 2026. The Loop, of course, everyone's familiar with that, and it is a vision of linking key destinations in downtown Beaverton and transportation investments that are going to focus on Southwest Hall Boulevard, Southwest Watson Avenue, and Fifth Street. And of course, we want a vibrant and inclusive downtown and make it easier for people to safely walk, bike, and take the bus, and drive, of course. So the 2425 work is going to focus on two key initiatives. One, a demonstration project funded with $4 million in federal community project funding, and then a project development phase that's funded with a $2 million federal raise grant. And the current status here is, so we're happy that we are recruiting for a project manager to support and assist the initiative. We'll be reviewing our grants agreements, our review and our execution of that. And then we have some scoping that needs to happen with the National Environmental Policy Act or something that we call NEPA. Community traffic safety improvements, this is another really important initiative that we've been looking at. It's going to primarily focus on photo red light, speed intersection evaluation, camera relocation, and future expansion. And then there'll also be a neighborhood safety enforcement initiative. I heard that as a part of last year's budget, and so we definitely want to put a focus on this. Just to kind of give you a sense of how this is going to transpire, the intersection evaluation and camera relocation will occur in the first fiscal year, so 2425, all of that activity will occur. And then in 2526, we'll start the intersection expansion, and we'll be ramping up to that. And we'll provide you kind of a process map of how that's going to be played out. We'll do a lot of communication because people will want to know where cameras are moving so we can create a level of awareness as people are going through major arterials in the city. The other item that's listed here is a comprehensive community policing engagement strategy. The development of an engagement approach and program to better engage residents is going to be particularly important. We need to do a better job of really reaching out to some of folks that are from the non-traditional or underrepresented groups. And so putting a strategy together with the help of some outside resources will be critical over the next year, really focusing on our communication and the way that we talk with our community and our residents. This work does align with many of the recommendations that you'll hear in the spring on the Polis Report, if that sounds familiar, and anticipate you're going to have that presentation in April. And so we're definitely wanting to get ahead of the curve in terms of planning for some of the recommendations that we think council will be focusing on. Again, there may be more feedback that you give us at that April presentation, and we'll work that in to the budget if that's the direction that council gives us. Then the next slide. This is fiscal recovery. And so in April of 2023, the council had a budget workshop and really focused on a number of initiatives and recommendations that you had asked to be put in motion. And so just as a reminder of what is currently underway, we are doing citywide funding and a number of revenue strategies. One focusing on efficiency assessment, so there's a commission assessment that, of course, we've kicked off with our boards and commissions. We have a repo graphics and service delivery review that's underway. And then there is a number of fee studies that I want to walk you through really quickly. A citywide fee study and cost recovery, so we understand that it takes money, obviously, to provide services, and we want to make sure that our fees are representative of that. A cost allocation plan will also be done. That's an analysis and allocation of the administrative costs and internal service funds across all funds in the city. So we want to make sure your indirect costs of what it costs, for instance, your attorney, your city manager, your HR, your finance, all of those high-levels service delivery folks like myself, how much that's costing us, and that needs to be embedded in our cost allocation plan. We also will have a cost services report for you. It's an outline of all full costs for various services or city programs. And then the last three, these will be coming later on in '24. One that's most important is the transportation utility fee study. Of course, you want to look at fee options to support transportation-related fees and strengthen our transportation fund. And we have two additional studies, a water rate study where you have asked us to look at tiered rates, so that will be coming likely in '25, and then a sewer storm rate study as well. And so those will be coming in the next year or two. And then we have local considerations. If the council wants to explore a potential for a local option levy or any kind of other measure, and so we'll be having a conversation, I hope, this summer about some of those options. And just as a reminder, we're also going to be tracking the proposed evaluation of WCCLS funding structure as well. And just kind of put out some information for the general community, 60% of our library comes from a county-wide levy, and the other 40% is funded through the city's general fund. So it's really important to understand how much revenue that levy is bringing in and then how much the city of general fund is supporting library services. And sometimes it's not quite enough, so we need to focus and make sure that we're able to support those important services. What's currently underway, so actually, all of these fee studies are underway to one extent or another. A majority of them are going to come to you around the fall, and then the others will come to you in spring '20 or '25 or later. And those will probably be the water rates and the sewer and storm rate studies as well. And then the last piece on the fiscal resiliency is the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. We're starting to begin planning for the infrastructure funding plan. So the development of all of the funding, the annexation approach, will all be presented to you for your consideration in fall of '24. And so this funding approach also includes the exploration of a supplemental transportation SDC, and so we want to talk to you about that as well. We anticipate, again, we'll have most of this wrapped up in early fall for your consideration. And we have funding that's also going to be included in the proposed budget to support this. And then the last is, next slide, is the natural resources. And there are a number of items here for the council consideration, and obviously, because this is a really important focal area. The first one is the community electric vehicle EV charging strategy and infrastructure planning. So we have use of an energy-efficient and conservation block grant planned to develop a kind of community-wide EV charging strategy roadmap. And the thing that we want to do with that is we want to understand what the city's role is going to be within the public EV charging space, want to identify the existing gaps that we have in our city code, and then develop a criteria to cite EV supply equipment. And then, of course, make sure that there's equitable access to that charging station. And then also look at strategies to support kind of EV-wide adoption and identifying really the number and the type of charging stations that we need in order to meet state goals. The other is the climate-friendly and equitable communities housing plan implementation. So we do need to amend Beaverton Code in order to comply with the executive order housing requirements around this. This includes removing any impediments to housing development in areas that are well-served by transit and other services. We're early in the project planning process, and full proposal probably will come to you around June of 2025. And then our tree policies, I know council's been wanting to address this for a while. The first step in this process is to get through the Cooper Mountain Community Plan Tree Code. This is in the southwest area of Beaverton, and there's new development code regulations that we want to propose to protect natural areas and optimize really the tree canopy in that area. We want to look at canopy targets, requirements for preservation of existing trees, and of course, tree planting requirements. So the draft code is actually in review now. We anticipate that we can have adoption of that about '24 in the fall, excuse me. And so once we get that in front of you, then that's going to help inform kind of our broader goal of a citywide tree canopy review and different options for you. So we want to identify implementable options within reason. There's a couple of things I want to highlight for you on this piece because they do involve code regulations. And we want to look at the near-term options that we can do shortly after we implement the Cooper Mountain Tree Code. And that is really, we want to try to limit our changes that don't involve things that are related to professional services for technical analysis or research because we want to be able to try to find things that we can implement rather quickly as we're working through the more detailed plan. The other piece of this is the tree program with Public Works. So we're preparing a grant application to include funding to hire two employees to help us achieve our climate goals in this area. So we'll be thinking about looking at how we can expand the urban tree canopy in underserved areas. We want to align city work with state urban forestry goals, and then, of course, those that need to align with the urban side of the forestry piece as well. And then our project will commence, as I said, after the Cooper Mountain Plan is adopted. And we're hoping that we'll be able to evaluate some grants and funding options. By spring, actually, this year, we'll start that process. And then there are two other ones left to go in this section we have. We want to advance the North Transmission Entertie implementation, so I talked a little bit about in my update with that. And that's probably really important because we want to, of course, have the redundancy. And so there are two segments to this project. The first segment is that staff will be working with a consultant to finalize the design. We're anticipating that that is going to be done by '2425. And then the second segment is part of Washington County's Walker Road Phase III project that will begin construction in 2025 as well. So we have staff to answer any technical questions you might have on that piece. And then the last is the update of the Beaverton Climate Action Plan. As you know, this was first adopted by council in 2029, and we had the intent of developing and updating it in five years. And of course, that hasn't happened. And so since that time, we've had a number of significant changes. So we're planning on doing the BCAP 2.0 process. We're going to begin that with technical analysis and data gathering. And then we have a robust engagement process that'll involve the council, executive leadership, and the community. And the framework concept under discussion proposes about an eight-to-a-10-year duration of the new plan and identify city climate goals and metrics to track them. And we really want to identify strategies to actually achieve them. And so there's going to be a lot more attentional process around this. Right now, we're in the project planning stage. We have two greenhouse gas inventories to inform the BCAP 2.0 process. So staff is currently preparing the scope of work, and they're identifying potential contractors. We hope work will begin this spring. It'll take about four to six months. And a BCAP 2.0 process framework should be developed by the end of spring of this year. And then the total completion of this should be in '25, spring of '25. So with all of that, we want you to kind of ask some questions. Are there any changes that you want to the work plan? Are there any, do you want to modify any of the work underneath the four priority areas? So just general feedback. And then what we'll do is we will bring this back for final adoption. The things that you approve ultimately will be embedded in the operating budget. That'll be proposed to you this May. And you should receive this item again to you in the spring, again, on consent calendar, barring whatever you decide to share in terms of changes to the proposed work plan this evening. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, City Manager. As a reminder to council, work sessions are a time to give feedback to the presentation that was given to us. Any major changes would require a majority vote to direct the city manager. So just a reminder, because you say it out loud doesn't make it so. And so if there are any major changes, we'll facilitate a conversation around if there is a majority of us that want to see change. With that, Council Dugger.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. First comment is this feels much more like a priority document than, so I like the evolution. The last one felt a little more grab-baggy with projects, so I think we're on the right track here. A couple of things for feedback-wise. Section 2. C.3, Neighborhood Safety Enforcement Initiatives. I remember my priority, and the priority I consistently hear from parents, from folks in neighborhoods, is cars drive too fast on residential speed. So I don't know if that's the language I would use to describe that. Like, to me, I want people driving safely around our, you know, our vulnerable people. And so I don't know if we need to wordsmith that, but that is one of my highest priorities. Moving on.
If you want us to consider moving something, we need to have a bit of a conversation. Is the language important to you, or do you think that it captures in essence what you hope to get across?
Well, this feels pretty broad to me, right? Like, this feels pretty, so, but you could, I think you could make an argument that, you know, that could fit under here, so that's why I wasn't quite sure.
What do you think about?
The language is, the intention is to be broad so that we have flexibility. So there are aspects that are important to you that fall under that category. Now would be the time to share that feedback, and then I can go back and make adjustments working with PD and other organizational stakeholders. So I'd be curious to hear from your perspective and other counselors if there are things that you want to make sure that we're capturing under this kind of broad initiative, if you will. This would be the place for me to take that feedback in and make adjustments.
So I'm good with the language, is, is.
I was just going to suggest, because I've heard that, is it worth saying something like neighborhood safety enforcement initiatives that provide autonomy for NACS? Like, that's kind of the direction that I hear it, is that we're allowing, like, the neighborhoods to help have more say? I don't know if that's capturing it, though.
I don't know if I like the word autonomy because they do not have autonomy in decision-making around these rules. And so I think if the intent is to capture what you're saying, I think the language does that with giving the city manager a little bit broad stroke. But if it's, is there something like specific, like, you want something very specific, but this goal is going to allow us to do more than one thing? And so is your fear if we don't call it out, it won't be so?
Yeah, like, I'm telling Ginny now, like, I'm, you know, I'm okay with the language. Because I think it does, to your point, it does give you the freedom beyond that, too. So if we want to do additional things. Moving on, da-da-da-da-da-da. Section 4.4A, referring to electric vehicles. Could that also include e-mobility devices, e-bikes, things like that, right? Electric vehicles are expensive, and not everyone needs that. And if there was a common, like, charging, just another bullet point that I think would be a great addition to that. I would recommend we add that.
I think e-bikes use a different charger. They're 110, not 220. But I think to Councilor Dugger's point, like, having, if we're bringing in a consultant to do this work, we want to have consideration around that. I mean, the other thing that happens with that is 110 outlets. How are we going to differentiate between people plugging in cell phones and being charged for it? So I would be comfortable in supporting Councilor Dugger's request of at least having it added into the language of the person doing this work for the RFP.
And I think there's work on a standardized charging cable infrastructure and whatnot. It's going to, I just want to get this in the framework, so whenever that is, whenever that happens, we're ready to go. And we're thinking about electricity in our bike parking. And I think that's it for me.
Yes, I would be supportive of that. And also, there's an equity issue where storage is an issue. So if you could look into that, where.
Storage of what?
Storage of e-bikes, in a sense that, in order for you to have an e-bike, you got to have either a house that you can park the e-bike or work on a place where you can park the e-bike. So for the people who cannot afford or low income, when you live in an apartment and work somewhere, that you cannot carry it and drag up to the stairs or whatever, unless you have an elevator, you have an office. You have no place to store. So we have to kind of look into that. Not that we're going to build something, but at least work on something that when you're providing charging, you need to provide where, at least a public space or public building, we need to have a space where they could park their e-bikes. Or somehow we have to look into that, and that's what I would.
Well, good news in our building, the parking garage, it does exist. Council Teeter?
Yeah, thanks. I was also going to bring up 4A about EV charging. Ginny, I would love to get your thoughts here, too, about broadening the language here so there's a little bit more flexibility for the use of the funding that we're going after or the funding that might be out there also. Because I think some wording that might encompass a little bit more for me would be, instead of community EV charging strategy and infrastructure planning, the wording would be community transportation sustainability strategy and infrastructure planning. And that would, in my mind, the purpose of changing that language would be looking at the gaps in sidewalk infrastructure, bike infrastructure, gaps with bus transit access and things like that. Because I think if we're just focusing on EV cars, we might be missing the mark for other opportunities because there are barriers that people have.
I'm going to have Dan provide a little bit of context of what we can capture in it because this is a very specific grant.
Thank you, Dan Weinheimer, Assistant City Manager. So the effort right now, I think, is focused on e-bikes, or, sorry, e-vehicles. It could be e-bikes, but I think it's really driven by needing to understand right-of-way usage and some of those things related to what's a current trend in folks wanting to charge, I think, in essence, from poles, from light poles and things like that, and how do we pivot to something like that? It's, that project would involve a lot around planning, a lot around our use of right-of-way and, you know, the sustainability group. So what we're trying to do with the minimal funding we have, which is federal funding from EPA, is really trying to scope the thing to actually effectively use that money without, you know, use as much grant money as we can rather than general fund money. So, you know, I think, I hear you, and I think it's possible we can add some of those things. But I think the idea is really. those things, but I think the idea is really understanding that, that actual physical connection and what land use regulations and, and actual incorporation with PGE and their goals around using their actual infrastructure, what our role would be and how that would work.
Okay. And is this a one-time grant opportunity, or has it come around on a?
I wish it were more often. I think we've gotten it twice now. This will be the second time. First, I think, was in recession times, and so it's, it's essentially a formula grant. There are other opportunities, I think, that are competitive out there. So if we had a project that we, when the competitive funding is available, we can apply, but we don't know yet when that's going to be. The funding has been kicked back, the deadline for our receiving it has been kicked back several times. I think they're actually, they're working on the rules. And so it's just, it's taking a whole lot more time than we expected to get the funding.
Okay, thanks.
And I think it's important to know, like, this is going to put us in line for federal funding. So we went through the same issue with internet, because we didn't have a plan, we couldn't receive federal funding. And the way that the Biden administration is now kicking out money through the Inflation Reduction Act, it's going to go to first-tier cities that have plans. And so if we don't do this, similar to what happened with broadband, we're going to miss the boat. And so, like, I'm with you, I want to look at a lot of things, but like, this is very particular about equipping our government relations team to go after federal funding, to look at things like pole charging and some of the other things that we're doing. And we have to do this work, or we will not be competitive in a federal grant cycle.
Yeah. Okay. I appreciate those, those comments. So I will echo more of what Councilor Duggar said, too, about if we can incorporate more micro-mobility options in the charging considerations that we're looking at, that would be really good. And then if we can also leverage some partnerships with Westside Transportation Alliance or something like that, to, to leverage resources that they have or partnership opportunities there, that would be really good. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Hassan.
Thanks. I have a question, and then I'll make some comments, and we can decide if they're big enough that you want changes. Jenny, I noticed, so the 188 supplemental for the bike team, I'm just wondering, bike team versus, like, Greater Good Northwest, was that like a staff decision, or like, what was the rationale behind going with increasing visibility of bike team versus the social services?
So it's not increased the visibility, it's actually providing boots on the ground and better coverage for the downtown area. We only had four members of the bike team able to provide that coverage, and you can see that six will give us better coverage. That was a, a decision to make earlier. This was going to come with the opening of the new shelter regardless. So we're actually doing something that was planned a little earlier, wasn't a decision of choosing that over funding. And obviously, it's a definite need, so we can support not only the community members that live in the area and our unhoused population, but also our local businesses as well.
Okay, I understand. Just from a fiscal lens, the Greater Good Northwest contract felt like got us a little bit farther, but I understand that we need to fulfill bike presence, so I'm not going to go into that anymore. My other comments were just more general. So on the DEI piece, I just happened to be with the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Advancement folks last week, and so just making sure, again, the more of a comment that we're partnering with that team for the multicultural center work. This is more of a comment, but I just, I do want to say this, from a 2B perspective, the city's gone through a lot of change, and I know that, you know, budget is very much looming. I'm hoping that we're going to do, you know, everything to hopefully keep the organization as intact as possible from like a layoffs perspective. And then I know something that I care a lot about is getting the library, the Marishalls location, open to seven days. I'm not saying I expect that to happen here, I just want to make sure everyone hears that. That's really important to me, and I like to see that. Just on Councilor Duggar's comment, I, like, thought of something, you know, like neighborhood safety enforcement, empowering neighborhoods to partner towards safety, because I do, I think Ginny heard it, but like, I, I do want folks to slow down, and I want us to remove any bureaucracy from helping neighborhoods and the slowdown happen. So I don't know if, maybe it's fine the way that it is, maybe we want to add, I'll leave it at that. My second-to-last comment is just about the fiscal sustainability recommendations. As we're doing the commission, boards and commission structure and review, I caught up with some folks who had the boards and commissions conversation. I think there's just tension around, like, how commissions can engage with our community while continuing to advise us, while continuing to advise staff. So I'd say that to you all more as like a, what does that look like to us as councillors, right? Or as, as an elected body? How do we let our boards and commissions feel empowered to make decisions while advising city staff? So just, I think that will be a tension point as we kind of go down this path, and I think it's something for you all to keep on your mind. The last thing I will say, I actually, and this might be silly, Ginny, like, when I see 4A, it just makes it seem more important. And I want 4E to be A and E, A to be E. And I'll just say two things. I think the Climate Action Plan work is just super important, and I want to make sure that we're prioritizing that. Of course, I support the community electric vehicle charging strategy, but I also want to acknowledge that most folks who own those vehicles are, are not a majority. And so just thinking through from a long-term vision perspective, I appreciated Councilor Teeter's idea of, of, you know, calling it community transportation sustainability strategy, and still having the first bullet point be around EV. I just, I want to be thoughtful for how much resources we put into EV. I'm not against EV, I just, you know, we want it, we want to support walking and biking and all of the things. So those are most of my comments. Yes, those are my comments.
Thank you. I, one, I don't know if they're enumerated for a reason, so you can answer that, but I would say that 50% of our community rents and the majority of them are multifamily housing. So if we don't take the ownership on planning for charging, the majority of our community is left out in the economic prosperity that the federal government has issued with the $70, $500 tax credit, the 500, or the $5,000 federal tax credit, because multifamily housing are not going to do it. And so I do think it is a role of government to make sure that we have public accessible charging stations, or the majority of our community is going to be continued left out of this conversation. So, but I, I don't, are you enumerating these in, in important order?
No, they're, they're not in any priority order.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't want to get in a rack-and-stack exercise if we, if we didn't need to.
They're all, they're on here because they're all important.
Oh, you love all your children equally.
Yes, I do.
Council Kimmy.
Well, I don't love all my children equally.
Who do you love most?
I, I hope they're watching, and we're going to email this.
They never watch this meeting. But I like to go back to Councilor Duggar's comment about neighborhood safety, where I have this, I have this little concern about the crossroads in our downtown area. And one thing I have learned was that we go by the criteria that's national and that's implemented throughout the city. So they don't distinguish between high-traffic, high-pedestrian, high-bike area versus neighborhood areas. So, so I, I would love to, if you can oblige me, that we, we, I would love to make another study or some kind of, not study, but research going on to where we have to implement separate criteria or different criteria for each, not each neighborhood, but economic, economic area or high-density area versus single-housing neighborhoods. And, and if we are going to implement the same criteria, then no crossroad deserves any safety measures according to the, because it's catered to the traffic, catered to the car, transportation, not, it does not cater to the bike or pedestrian traffic. So I, I don't know how I'm going to word it, but somehow look into a, a research or some staff level that they could come out, come up with an idea where we can look at each neighborhood or each section, as I said, economic or downtown versus any other neighborhoods separately, differently, with different lens. So we can equitably implement the safety measures appropriate for that road and for that neighborhood. And we are not able to do that right now. Every time we come up with something, it's met with resistance because it doesn't meet the criteria that's catered to the traffic. So I don't know how you can incorporate that into the staff level, but that's my concern.
I don't even know what he's asking for, do you now?
I, I do know what he's asking for.
I think he wants a stop sign on his street by his, by his house, so if you could do that.
I think, I think what it is in a nutshell, and Council Kimmy, please tell me if I'm not summarizing this, but essentially, we do have a, a set of criteria of how we determine, like, for instance, whether a stop sign will go in. There's questions around the criteria, the basis for it, is there any flexibility or subjectivity? Is it all, you know, a one-size-fits-all? And I think Councilor Kimmy is asking if there's other considerations that can help drive that, that don't create any kind of legal exposure for the city. So that's actually something I can do offline. I, I probably don't necessarily want to incorporate it in this, but I can certainly do the work offline. We're having ongoing conversations about this, and I can work with Public Works Team to better understand what flexibility, if any, that we have in that criteria.
Can, can we have this in a work session?
Sure, if the council would like to come back and discuss it, absolutely.
I think, what I think I'm seeing the nods from the council here is, one, I think we need a better understanding of what staff-level decisions are made. I, I, I agree, I've talked to Councilor Kimmy about the downtown stopping sign issue before, because I lived on that same road. And so I think the council needs to understand how staff is making those decisions, and what endpoint, when can the council decide those are no longer staff decisions, and they need to go to Transportation Committee or to us? So I think if you could schedule a work, a work session for us, I, I think would you be a minimal to not changing the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that feel good?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the board.
Thank you.
Got it. Council Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Thank you. I'm comfortable adding e-bikes into, I don't remember the section, but just adding support in case we were not yet at four. I think because of what we've got covered in the TSP and then also the work around EVs, I think we've got a pretty comprehensive set of priorities when it comes to us having a better understanding of the users of our ways of getting around of our transportation system. So I think, like, I don't think there's any other edits that I would want to add, I just, I do like that specific call to e-bikes, because I think that we have done a really nice job of, you know, keeping our eight goals, of focusing our strategic priorities from six down to four. I don't want us to continue to add in things, like, we, we've talked a lot about how staff needs us to not keep adding things, and so I actually think that the things that I'm hearing from my colleagues are already covered in this plan without us adding a new thing or really changing the language. So that's all I wanted to say on that.
Thank you. Jenny, the format of this document is great, and I think it's really easy to understand. I think you heard the council in our retreat and the refined documents, and I think what you're hearing today is minor tweaks, because this is a really good plan. I look forward to it coming back. I am super excited to see work on tree canopy. It's been a decade of trying to get that done. Like I mentioned, with electric car charging stations, like, we have to be the owner of that for communities that have no other access. And if you rent a house, so it might not let you install it, or if you live in multifamily. So the planning work, I'm very interested in that. I think it would also be interesting to have overlay of the heat island effect and where that's happening as a focal starting point, particularly with the poles that PGE are putting in, since they often cut down trees to put in poles. And can we deliver back to these same communities that lost intense tree canopy? Can we at least put in these public car charging stations in areas that desperately need it, that lost tree canopy? So I think we can accomplish two things with this. I'm looking forward to having a deeper conversation about that in the future. I know it doesn't seem as cool to talk about the transmission line. It's another project that's been on council's priority for over 10 years. This will never, the community will never understand how important this is unless we have a Cascadia-level event. And the work around this is phenomenal, and we are one of the most rich water cities in the state because of past council's dedication to working water in, in our underground wells in this transition line, the traffic improvements and all that we're doing. I think this is a great start. This is a lot of work on the year ahead. I think the council realizes that, the undertaking, and every, I feel like in this plan, all seven of us have a win, and something that matters to them, and something they can go back to the community and talk about. And there's a lot of collective wins that the staff are going to be able to produce this year with a clear document, clear understanding, and clear council goals. I do want to challenge the council and the City Manager, once we agree to this, everything we ask for has to be judged against the list. And you have to help us understand what can't get done if we ask you for more things. And I think our commitment to you is that we agreed to this, and we're going to try to make, keep the main thing the main thing. So I'm excited, this feels like a really awesome place to go. Council Teeter, go ahead.
Thanks. I've got one more. I'm not going to top that. I want to build on something that Councilor Kimmy was just talking about, because he made me think of the Engineering Design Manual. Are we, are we talking about that, or are we updating that this year as a city? Thanks, Dan.
Once again, Dan Weinheimer, Assistant City Manager. We are, have been working on revisions to the EDM, the Engineering Design Manual, I think in sections, kind of subject matter sections. And so I, I know that work is ongoing, it's not complete. It is kind of work that arguably is always ongoing, and so I think we're hopeful to have some revised sections available this year. We've had some staff turnover in that area, so I think that will kind of help, once we fill those positions, will help kind of move that back along.
Okay. The reason why I ask is, for those of you who might not know, Engineering Design Manual is a very large document that basically regulates, regulates design of public right-of-way and all sorts of pieces of development when it's being built. And some of this touches on streets and street design. And I'm, I, my thought was, if we're talking about some of Councilor Kimmy's thoughts in a future work session, it could be helpful to talk about the connections with the Engineering Design Manual and where some updates might need to be there, too.
Sure, we can bring that back.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Jenny, Council Hassan just slid me a note and said she'll vote no on this plan unless you change 4E and A, so please have those switched when it comes back to us. We appreciate that.
Noted.
All right, we are on to work session 23281, a six-month update on HB 3115. And it looks like we have, like, 11 people presenting, so please pull up a chair.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Celia Lindstrom, Assistant City Manager. We do have a team for you here tonight for your update on what we've been calling HB 3115. It is your prohibited camping ordinance. This is something you all passed last June, and you, at that time, asked for a six-month check-in. Part of the ordinance does require an annual check-in, and it's pretty specific about some of the data you want to see. But at that time, you also recognized the importance of this and wanted us to do a six-month check-in. So here we are. We do have, in addition to Captain Master Polito, who is going to be kind of doing most of this and leading this out of BPD, we also have Megan Cohen, who will be doing some of the later slides. We have two folks who are, we didn't want to crowd the table too much, so Grace Wong, who is a familiar face related to 3115, and then Greg Brown will also be talking about a little bit of this. So we'll be trading the, this off as we go. The one thing I do want to point out for folks who are in the viewing audience, our prohibited camping ordinance is just one part of a continuum of homeless strategies that we in the city are employing. And it's everything, as we know, from sheltering and outreach services, de-escalation and safety, enforcement, treatment courts. So there's a full continuum, and this is just one piece of that. And one of the reasons you're seeing this broad team here is because of the interrelationship of all of those aspects of our system. So with that, I'm going to let Grace lead us off with a little background.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Grace Wong, Assistant City Attorney. And just to refresh our memories on House Bill 3115, it's now established in ORS 195530. It provided that all cities and counties look at their prohibited camping ordinances and make sure that they are objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner with regards to persons experiencing homelessness. With that standard in mind, we took a look at the city's prohibited camping ordinance, and we had some feedback and made changes and presented City Council with a and we had some feedback and made changes, and presented City Council with a new prohibited camping ordinance on June 2023, which was made effective July 1. In that ordinance, it permitted camping within the right-of-way if, for people without alternative shelter, between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:30 AM. And we placed in there also some manner restrictions for how people without alternative shelter could camp on the public right-of-way. Next slide, please. And since that time, since the ordinance was adopted, there's been some cases in this area of law. The most important one to highlight for you this evening is Johnson versus City of Grants Pass. It used to be called Blake versus City of Grants Pass, and what we've heard is that the Supreme, the U.S. Supreme Court has granted sociurari, which means that they have agreed to hear this case. We are closely watching it. We, meaning the Oregon City Attorneys Association, and I will definitely update the council if I, if and when I get more details on that case. The next case that has occurred is the Villado versus City of Medford. It was the same magistrate court judge that decided and provided findings and recommendation on the Johnson versus City of Grants Pass case. He determined that Medford's ordinance that was passed after House Bill 3115 was reasonable and recommended dismissal of the case under the Eighth Amendment. The final dismissal from a Article III judge hasn't occurred yet, but there's a lot of good analysis made by Judge Clark in that opinion that we are watching closely also.
So the BPD Bike Team was tasked with kind of spearheading the enforcement, but I like to use more of the term of education and outreach. Just we committed to council in July. The goal was not to be heavy-handed with, with folks in their unfortunate situation. The Bike Team is triaging everyone we deal with and utilizing a kind of holistic approach to people experiencing homelessness. We're working with community services, the library, Greater Good Northwest, outreach teams, Safe Park, our partners at Home Plate, housing vouchers, financial aid and assistance, Beaverton Behavioral Health Court, when necessary, to try to navigate folks from point A to point B. We're working closely with our friends at Public Works, who have been very helpful and proactive in policing the library area, keeping it clean, keeping it unsightly. Historically, and we'll get into this a little bit later, we would call them out as needed, and, and now they're partnering with us to be, coming out several times a month, make sure the area is clean, and, and really being a great partner in this. With that, multiple departments are maintaining data. The Bike Team always kept some information. Megan's team kept information, but now the fact that we have folks, they're more, we're moving them around. They're, they're not anchoring in one place. We don't want anyone to get lost in the shuffle. So the Bike Team is keeping track of folks. Megan's team is, Greater Good Northwest is, and we're kind of collaborating. It's almost if you can envision the, the team approach that you'd be familiar with in, like, Be Sober or Behavioral Health Court. Well, not at the same level yet. That's kind of what we're doing on a day-to-day basis, just to make sure that folks aren't getting lost in the shuffle, and then Megan will get more into that once she gets to her piece. And looking at the numbers, the map on the right shows where camps have been located, and when we refer to a camp, we're looking at someone who actually put up a tent, built some form of structure. This really isn't the one person in a sleeping bag staying warm for the night. So as we define camp, it's good to know what we refer to as a camp. We've identified 155 of those in the six-month period. 151 are new contacts. 38 of those are repeats. In the repeats, you have folks that we would normally identify as native to Beaverton. So we've got some folks in there that are born and raised in Beaverton, and, and we deal with them quite regularly. We've got some folks who have moved to Beaverton several years ago, and I would consider them kind of a Beaverton element. And then we have folks that we may or may not have seen in passing more than one time, either day over day, or in passing, either coming or going through the city.
Sorry, really quick. One person is called a camp, to be clear.
Um, one site is a camp. So you could have two people in a tent, that would be one camp, so, but many times, it's just one person, one tent is the experience. Part of the 38 are some of our more chronic issues that we're dealing with, some are more challenging folks, that we kind of do a lot of time towards. We have three we've offered financial assistance to, that's either housing vouchers, goodwill gift cards, just some way for them to kind of get from here to where they need to go. It could be bus passes, it could be food. We referred to other agencies 113 times. That's either going to be Greater Good, the library, Hawthorne Center, Life Works. So as the Bike Team starts to really triage this as trying to problem-solve, we're trying to direct folks to where they, they can actually go to get the next level of help that they need, and we've been real successful in, in folks taking that help. We've issued 169 warnings, so as you see, it's not a, a heavy-handed approach. The Bike Team is doing a street-level diversion on all of this, because we're very sympathetic to the situation these folks are in. If we can get them to clean up their spot on their own, we don't want them to get called in as trespass, or we don't want to get called in as a defensive littering. So we work with folks. We give them trash bags, we give them time. We work with business owners and residents to communicate and go, we've spoken to them, they're working it out, and just, and cooperate, and it's been very successful. We've cited and released 15 folks under the camping ordinance. Some of those had additional charges attached to them, either a warrant or a theft charge, perhaps. And then one was an actual in-custody arrest, and my understanding is that person had a warrant attached to them, so that was an actual physical in custody. The 15 referrals go over to the city attorney's office, and Mr. Brown will get more into that, but they kind of, we continue to work on, we, our team coordinates and communicates with the city attorney to explain the situations that we came across, so it isn't just, here's a police report, take it to arraignment. There is a constant conversation between our group and the city attorney's office to continue to find aid and support for folks in this situation.
Good evening, City Councilor, Mayor. My name is Greg Brown. I'm your city prosecutor. Let's see here. As you can see from this slide, this contains some of the data that's, actually tells you what happens with these cases when they actually make it on over to the court. So to be clear, none of the warnings issued by the Bike Team actually hit my desk or the desk of my, my colleague, Mr. Garmes. These are the cases that actually have hit our desk. These, due among you, will notice that these numbers are off by approximately eight cases. I tracked down the source of that discrepancy. Essentially, it was a data issue. There are, the BPD's numbers are correct. We missed eight cases that were dismissed as a result of this, largely because of the street-level diversions that Captain Master Polito referred to. These are cases where essentially the officer offers an incentive to the individual to move their, their campsite, a dismissal of the citation before he ever even hits the desk of the prosecutor. So we never actually saw those, and therefore, those are not accounted for in our data. As you can see, we actually filed in the Beaverton Municipal Court seven cases of that, of those seven cases, that accounts for six unique individuals. Five of those were dismissed post-charging, either as part of a deal on other charges. Typically, these come packaged together with either a trespassing or a theft, or sometimes a disorderly conduct. Sometimes, at least one of these people had multiple cases in the Beaverton Municipal Court, so the camping case was dismissed as part of a plea bargain that resolved a different case in the court. As you can see, we still have two of these cases outstanding. Both of those cases are essentially failures to appear, so they are in what's referred to as abscond status. We don't know where these individuals are.
Back to me from Public Works. I, I just want to thank our partners at Public Works for helping us out with this. While they're not here, they've been coming four times a week to the library, and the information on this slide, I want to kind of put it in context. We've always had situations at the library where we needed things cleaned up. If we can recall, years ago, the bike shelter, it would get very unsightly. We would call Public Works out, they would come out and clean it, and it would look great, and then we kind of, things would get out of hand again, and then we'd call Public Works out. So the numbers on here, 60 shopping carts. We've had issues with shopping carts around town for years. This is nothing new. In and around the library, we've had them for years, but now we're taking a more proactive approach. As we find them, we remove them. Feces incidents on the ground, again, nothing new. Things happen. Won't get into that. Graffiti reports, graffiti ebbs and flows throughout the city of Beaverton. Over the years, my years, I've taken hundreds and hundreds of graffiti reports, so that's nothing new. One abandoned tent and sleeping bag, given the number of contacts, is very minimal, actually. And a total of 65 visits in that timeframe. What we try to do is figure out, are we, is there any difference in what they're doing? I can't determine if there's a cost savings, because it's a regular maintenance versus the one-time call-outs, but I can attest that there are less calls for the nuisances, the unsightly bike shelters, calls from the, from the market on Saturdays, calls from our neighbors in and around the library area saying, this is out of hand. So there's a benefit to that, coming out four times a week, and just doing a general maintenance of the area. They're still working with the Bike Team. If we find something that needs a little extra attention, they're on the spot. But this proactive approach has been a really key component to, I think, the success of our implementation of this process.
So on the resource side of things, one thing that I wanted to talk about tonight was around the same time that we started implementing our time, place, manner ordinance, we also had the governor's emergency orders coming into place as well, which created in Washington County something that's called LC3, the Locally Coordinated Command Centers. And what that meant for us was that there was some, we always have street outreach. As you all know, we have Greater Good Northwest regularly out in the area, but there was a more targeted outreach effort that was specifically started during this time, from August 14th to September 30th. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but it was focused on the area near the Beaverton City Library, and that's how I'm able to share some more specific data with you, as you'll see on this slide, around what some of those outcomes and interactions have looked like in that, in this area. And so that has been an effort led by Washington County, and it included street outreach teams from Greater Good Northwest, Open Door, Home Plate, and ERCO, so that they were able to also target specific populations and to be able to resource them with specific needs as well. What this did was create a by-name list and initiated a collaborative approach to case management, in which they worked down the list, and as a team, talk about what are the specific needs and barriers that people are experiencing, and then provide those resources with the goal, of course, of getting folks into housing. And so you'll see, they are actually continuing this process. This happened throughout the county in different geographic areas, and all of the outreach teams really feel that this was a useful practice in how to collaborate and work through folks experiencing unchallenged homelessness in our area. And you can see from the data that we have up until February, we have 82 names that were on that by-name list that were created. 40 were placed in shelter, 18 were housed, and then, of course, the folks in shelter or that have housing referrals, those were continuing to work through those cases. And so I think some things that we've learned from that, right, is it takes a long time to get people into housing. It requires a lot of resources, and I think, as Captain Master Polito has said, requires a team effort and a lot of heavy collaboration to be able to resource folks. And I think that has been one of the successes of getting teams together and working through this in response to the prohibited camping ordinance that we have. So I won't go into a lot more detail about that, and we'll just talk about where we're going to go from here. So ongoing, of course, we will continue to do the same work that we're doing right now, both in terms of police enforcement, education and outreach, and cleanup efforts, and also street outreach and resourcing folks on the ground as well. We have some new things coming within this and are trying to identify, like, what are the resources that we need on an ongoing basis? Those, of course, include our year-round shelter, shelter beds, and being able to offer shelter beds is an important component to 3115. We cannot do enforcement without having those shelter beds available, and also having a place for people to go during the day. So that is the access centerpiece that we've been talking about and trying to figure out how we get a, how we get a pilot off the ground and then work on a permanent solution long-term. I think you've also heard tonight that that includes the expansion of the Bike Team adding another two officers on the ground to be able to extend that full week coverage. And then we've also heard tonight about assessing and improving library safety protocols and just that ongoing problem-solving, communication between teams, continuing to have conversation about how we can improve and communicate moving forward when it comes to responding to camps and folks experiencing unchallenged homelessness in our downtown core.
And that brings us to the last slide. So this was mostly informational, but I will leave you with a couple of questions if you want to take them on. When you all considered this in June, though, you had two kind of primary questions you were dealing with at that point. One was around the time, and you ended up setting that to 9:00 PM to 7:30 AM, and you all had some conversation about seasonality. So we've been continuing to talk with our partner jurisdictions in the area to, just to keep an eye on that, because we do have some variation among us in terms of the time constraints we've set, and I know that was something that you all were concerned about. So at this point, none of the other jurisdictions are making any changes to their time constraints, and at this point, we as staff are not bringing you a recommendation on that. If that is something you all would like to open up, you could let us know. The place where a couple of our jurisdictions are, partner jurisdictions are making changes are around the camp stove language. So both Hillsborough and Tigard have elected to modify that language to make sure that camp stoves can, are allowed under their ordinance. If, and our language is similar to Tigard's old language, so if this is something you would like us to open up, we could bring it back to you in a new work session.
Can you tell us, is this a problem we're solving, is the officers finding people with camp stoves and telling them to turn it off?
Mayor, so what, what situation arises in those cold months, we know that folks are going to be using anything they can to keep warm, and it makes sense. And reaching out to TVFNR, there haven't been any instances county-wide where a situation has erupted, a fire as a result of a camp stove. You've seen in Portland where camps will go up in flames, those are the bigger camps, open flames situations. One of the concerns from my side is, are we putting language in there that is forcing people to be in violation of the ordinance when all they're trying to do is survive? I understand the, the need for safety, but we also need the common sense approach. Hillsborough's done it, Tiger's done it. We're not knocking on tents at night to see if folks are using a camp stove to keep warm, nor should we be. This is language that's in there that currently, under the code, if they're utilizing a camp stove, it's a violation of the ordinance.
I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to, to shift the language to be inclusive of allowing that, particularly with the winter we had, and we understand the cost of food is escalating. Council Hassan?
Two clarifying questions and a comment. First of all, thank you for this work, working with our most vulnerable communities. Captain Master Polito, you brought up warnings. If we give folks warnings, is there any tracking of that? Like, I gave Council Hassan a warning, and then the next officer is like, I also gave her a warning.
Sure. Fortunately, and one of the reasons to help also benefit the expansion of the team is, the Bike Team is primarily a unit responsible for the enforcement of, of the camping ordinance. The team generates a CAD call, so the person, they'll usually run the individual, if we can get their information, and, and they are the ones to do the follow-up. So they're familiar with who they're doing the diversion with, where the camps are located. Some of them are tucked in, so they'll know to go check on them. So one of our benefits of that seven-day expanded coverage is that our entire team is really dealing with the situation where it's just not a patrol dispatch on a Sunday. So we do track them, and, and like Megan said, we're keeping information on folks to help them along.
Okay. So there's like some system-ish.
There is a system to it, yes.
Okay, thank you. For the failure to appear, does that typically issue a warrant?
Counselor, it does. It's the only mechanism to get somebody into court. Typically, though, when a, an arrest warrant is issued, although an amount of the warrant has to be specified under Oregon law, people are not typically held on bail for something like this, and indeed, right now, given the staffing issues at the Washington County Jail, no one is really being held. no one is really being held on misdemeanor crimes right now at all. So I can attest to the counsel that nobody has been held in custody for a camping-only violation since we've adopted this ordinance.
Okay. The last comment was more just general about the access center. As you're thinking about the access center, I will just say, like, having worked a lot with immigrant and refugee communities, these are folks that typically just figure it out. And so if there are ways to make sure that as you're building that, whether that's, you know, chatting with the planning around the multicultural center, I'm not saying they're the same thing, but I do think that what we often find in immigrant and refugee communities is they are so mutually aid-centric that they just house 10 people, probably violating fire codes. So just thinking through, like, what does an access center look like that is able to provide those services? Thank you.
Counselor Duggar?
A quick comment and a few questions. I would be in support of keeping our regulations as close as our neighbors as possible. So I would support that. Just, I have a hard enough time knowing when I'm in Beaverton versus Tigard, and so I think, I think it's, that would be my initial. Couple of questions. How's our shelter capacity utilization been? Are we at 100% every night?
Yes.
We are. Good to know. Couple of questions regarding communication. How many people have we prevented from falling into houselessness? Do we know, like, through, and I know a lot of the county does some work there?
We, we could get some more data. I think there's work being done on rent assistance specifically, of course, and eviction prevention and those types of things. So depending on specific programming, we can, we can definitely ask our partners for some data and come back with that.
If it's not too much of an ask, I think that's a really important story. I'd also love to see if, again, if it's not too much, although I think we had mentioned this. Regular updates or like a dashboard on folks moved into permanent housing is really critical for us out in the community when we have this story. I know we heard some numbers, I think in like October around the Bloomberg Institute work, stuff like that. I just think we need to, we need to publish that and arm people as often as possible. And then my, my final question is really, how are we coordinating with the county in regards to, and other governmental, let's just say other governmental agencies? I know it was mentioned earlier about BSD students, right? We know we have a large homeless youth population. Are we coordinating with them to kind of be proactive in outreach to those affected individuals? Because what I don't want to do is, is see our homeless youth become homeless adults when we could, we can close the gap with services. And I was wondering if there's any sort of story there on outreach and proactiveness?
Yeah, I can start the answer to that question. I think Washington, yes, we are working with Washington County. Washington County approaches this as a system-wide issue. And so looking at holistic resources and making sure that we're trying to fill gaps and be able to direct people to the appropriate place. So that does include homeless youth services, as well as when we talk about homeless youth, we're often talking about family homelessness. So, and that's including family shelters as well that are serving youth or even pregnant individuals, which is something that we have been seeing a lot of, I think, in our safe parking program recently. We, I think, for the street outreach specifically, of course, we're so lucky to have Home Plate here in Beaverton. They are able to offer on-the-ground services and the drop-in center on a day-to-day basis. And they offered services throughout the county on the LC3 process to ensure that if there were youth that people were coming across, that they were part of that process of case management and figuring out where they go next. And we, I'll just, the last thing that I'll say is that we see a lot of overlap in our services because youth often go up to 25 or so, and adult shelters start at 18. And so I think one thing that we've learned through this process is just making sure that we're collaborating, talking about where we're seeing folks and how we make sure we get the services that are best tailored to them.
Okay, thank you. And I think one of the great things that this whole 3115 exercise did was bring everyone together. Not only in trying to implement it countywide, because we were collaborating about this. We had a situation where we had a BSD student and parents living in a box van. And the school district ran out of options. They contacted our youth services group who contacted me. I contacted Megan, and we got them in a safe park. So this is one example of collaborations going on, trying to figure out who to best serve. And we got them in, and hopefully we've got them services and moved on. We tried to connect them with Home Plate for the child. We tried to get the parents some resources through some other elements. So that's one example of how that's working.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Totally kind of related. Can, I would love to see us, like, not only create or have some of these data resources for us, but like in the newsletter, right? Like, our community deserves to know all the work that's happening because, because I think there's a lot of compounding of like behavioral health problems and mental and addiction problems, but there's also just people that really need help. And it's so easy to like put it all in one bucket, and I think the more we tell that story is going to be helpful, right? So, thank you.
And I think on the good news, the county chair called me after a meeting today and said that the county is going to be doing some more work on communicating as well, since this is really theirs, and they recognize they put a lot of this onus on cities to do the communication for programs that we don't operate. So we can tag in with some of the work they're doing and spend their money. That would be helpful. Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you. We just had a couple of comments here about the safe parking program. How are we doing with the capacity of available spaces for our safe parking program? Is it being used? Can you fill us in a little bit there?
Yes, we, we are usually at capacity for the safe parking program. There's usually a process of sort of, folks are getting housed, and we have, you know, open spots, and we're working with referral and with the existing waitlist that we have. So there are times when we're just in between. But usually, we are at capacity for the safe parking program with all 15 slots that we have available. We will be working on a report for the end of this fiscal year with outcomes, but I'm pretty proud of the work that Just Compassion and their staff have done in the safe parking program over the year. There have been a lot of really difficult situations, and they have done really good work housing folks or finding another option for them, especially around the storm, trying to get people into motels and those types of things. So we'll have more information to share about that, and I will say that BPD is our primary referral source for that. And it's been a really close partnership to make sure that that's where people end up and that we get them somewhere next.
Do we have the need or the ability to grow that in the future, grow that program?
That has been something that we're discussing and would have financial impact.
Okay, yep, financial impact is always the key. I would also support allowing camp stoves if they're used in a safe manner, following the model of some of our neighboring communities. I want to go back to the slide about resources that were offered, number of camps that were contacted. It looked like resources were not shown here on this table anyways, yeah, this one, as being offered, resources as in financial assistance or referrals were not offered for every contact or number of camps. Is that, people just didn't accept resources that were offered, or can you fill me out on the gap there?
Sure. So the bike team offers resources every contact. It could be food, socks, clothing, hygiene supplies, anything. So in some cases, many people will take something, some folks will take nothing. It all depends on where we catch them. In some of our repeats, they may not take anything today, but take something tomorrow. So part of our process is to actually build that relationship and make a positive interaction between the folks that are generally being contacted by law enforcement in a negative capacity to turn it into a positive. Because many times, we're the first step to getting them to Megan and Greater Good and the next process. So we have to build that trust. So the bike team rolls around, the sergeant rolls around with a, you would think he was going to a laundromat. He has clothes and coats hanging in his car. The guys have food and socks and all kinds of provisions in their vehicle and then their bike bags. So every interaction is an opportunity to engage and an opportunity to provide some kind of outreach service to them, even if it's a protein bar.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That helps.
Sure.
And then my final question here. The motels denying rentals to service providers caught my attention, and I was wondering if any of you could touch on that a little bit? Like, what, why are they denying renting to service providers? Is there anything we can help with there?
Yeah, I think this is, Washington County would, and our outreach providers could provide some more specifics around this. But from my understanding, some of it is related to, you know, damages, those types of things, being concerned about that. Who is making the ask rate to use that and who is paying for the costs? It depends if it's sort of one-off or there's established agreements and that type of thing. There's, of course, some liability and those types of things when we have outreach providers doing that. And so we also do have what we call a bridge shelter, which is motels that have been converted into non-congregate beds. And that, those are all at capacity, especially through the locally coordinated command center process, finding that a lot of folks, it's, congregate shelter is really difficult. So trying to get them into, getting folks into non-congregate shelter and then into housing. But that, that has been a strategy that's been effective to be able to use those, use those rooms.
Okay. Is there anything that we could do to incentivize more motels agreeing to provide some rooms? For, at least on a temporary basis, like, people need a night of lodging, we can give it to them, kind of thing?
Yeah, that's something I can ask our partners and follow up.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Preg?
All right, please shout out if you cannot hear me, and I can go off camera. So first, I just really want to say a huge thank you.
Hey, Counselor Hartmeyer-Preg, we're having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if you guys need to turn up the volume. It's her? Okay.
Okay, can you hear me better with my camera off?
A little bit, but if you could turn up your volume, that'd be helpful.
I can't. I can speak louder. Does that help?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mostly, I just wanted to say a huge thank you for this coordinated effort. I think that between last night and today, the amount of proactive work that is happening is evident. And even if maybe we aren't seeing like a reduction in number of people experiencing homelessness, it's actually to me because the system here is working, that we're getting people through to the next thing, right? And people are learning that they will get help if they come to Beaverton. And I know that's also a hard thing for us to endure when we have limited resources. But I'm really hopeful seeing that all of the coordinated effort is working. And this, we have to play the long game here, and we have to keep really working at every angle that we can. So just a huge thank you from me. I see the work that you're doing day in and day out. And I know that right now, we're dealing with some extra challenges that we want to make sure that we're responsive to. But the proactive work that you are doing, I see it. So thank you. And then for a future work session, I also think it'd be worth us revisiting the camp stove situation. We don't want to be preventing someone from staying warm. So, and knowing that TVFNR has weighed in gives me some comfort knowing that we should really adjust our regulation there.
Thank you. Counsel President?
Yes, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. It's hard work. I recognize that because there's no real quick solution to the issues that we have. Can you tell me a little bit more about access center that has been in the works? I know, I remember doing one-on-one, but is that the same thing that we talked about, or is it a little different?
Sure, yes. So yes, this is the same as the briefing we did a little bit earlier. And the idea between an, behind an access center is it's like a day shelter, right? A place during the day, people can go, it's actually an important component of our 3115 implementation, where people can go receive services, have a chance to rest, recharge, both literally and figuratively, showers, washing machines, those, those kinds of things. It is something that Washington County is going to be, or has just put out a notice of funding opportunity, and they are interested in making sure that there is an access center in the Beaverton area. So we are hoping a service provider in our area or two will apply for one of those. So, and we're actively working, obviously, to help them find a good site because citing it is going to be one of the really important aspects of this.
So it doesn't have to be in city of Beaverton, but the proximity, near? Because I know we don't have land or building that we can provide yet, but we can maybe help them find any location maybe near our city limits? Maybe that's what you're looking at?
Yes, I would say they're, they are looking for the geographic, this kind of general geographic area. There are access centers already in Tigard, Hillsborough, and Forest Grove. So it really is our area that we're missing.
Okay. Regarding the number of contacts or camps, have you seen increase in numbers since last year?
Not so much year-over-year. I think the new contacts is a bit up, but I would expect that, given that each jurisdiction implemented a similar time, place, or manner ordinance. So you're seeing folks more mobile. And just like Counselor said, it's hard, if you look at the map of Beaverton, it's not a nice big square. So as folks move through the county and from Multnomah County into Washington County, they're just looking for the next spot. So we're seeing some newer contacts, but I don't know that numbers are drastically higher. But I can, I can follow up on that and get you a year-over-year comparison.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I just wanted to wonder if it's ever increasing. And the reason I ask is that when I ran for the election, I looked up the statistics from Washington County, and it says about 817 homeless people in entire Washington County. And now it's 800. For the last two years, number-wise, we housed maybe less than 20 people. But that's not what I hear from the other statistics that I hear, that we house so many people, that everybody, we're working hard to house, like 70% rate of housing. So why is their number difference with the county statistics versus what I hear from other electives or the people who work on the ground?
So some of the numbers we look at, we deal with a lot of the more folks that are chronically homeless, folks that are choosing to be more transitory. And that's just a number that we deal with here with the BPD Bike Team. The numbers the county's looking at and that Megan's group or Greater Good is looking at are folks that may be transitioning into a houseless situation, or folks that are truly on the cusp of homelessness that are being helped. So that number, we're not really looking at an apples-to-apples comparison. This is just one image of a population of houseless versus the entire, I don't know, umbrella of homelessness, I guess, right?
Yeah, the 800 number that I heard is, I believe, the point-in-time count from last year. Our point-in-time count this year actually went down for the county. It's in the 700 area. That is folks that are in shelter or unsheltered. And I think one thing we've heard tonight, right, is some of that data around prevention that we're doing as well. So I know the county shared with us last night that in the last year, they had housed 1,400 folks. So that is also ensuring, right, that's not just the folks that we're seeing outside. That's families, other folks that are also, that we're doing housing prevention with as well.
Okay, just quick, two questions. For the location of Greater Good Services, that's at the library. Since we're going to build a permanent shelter in different location, do you ever consider moving the services near the location? Or is it because of convenience of library that everybody gathers? Is that the place that we prefer? So that was just on my mind, because once the services move to a different location, not the services but shelter, do you ever consider moving the services?
Yeah, it's definitely something we'll keep an eye on. I do know libraries across the country are, they're community centers. And so this issue is not going to go away once the shelter moves, is what we anticipate. Now, what level of service we need in the library, once we stand up for, for instance, the access center as well, that, that might shift some of the need, and we'll definitely keep an eye on it. But I would anticipate that we'll probably always need some level But I would anticipate that we'll probably always need some level of support at the library for that.
Yeah, I don't understand that, but just location-wise. Yeah, that's it for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us tonight and for the presentation, and of course, for the hard work. You all play a very important role in this very complex problems, and you all see this issue very differently, and so it's always helpful for us. And I'm glad we've had opportunities to pair together, because it really does take every level of government working together to work on this issue. And what we saw last night was the county has been doing a lot of work, they've not been great at communicating it, and so, similar to what we're doing here tonight, I hope we can continue these conversations and let the community know the work that we're doing together. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Mayor. And I think I heard that you all would like us to bring something back on the camp stove, so we'll be back in work session for that.
I hope the city manager reviewed your slides after I just said we weren't going to add anything, but there you go.
Thank you.
Snuck that in there. All right, we're on to our last agenda item. Any council new business this evening? Go ahead.
So just want to let you all know, the mayor, Counselor Hartmeyer-Preg and I, we did a great tour with Back Home, which is a provider in the Portland area that does a lot of accessory dwelling units, and they, they helped get them at much more affordable prices than, than we often see in just the typical market. They had been able to get some prefabricated ADU units and also some stick-built units for about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars apiece, which is probably about a hundred-thousand dollars less than what we might typically see. So this was a really great tour where we talked about what are some strategies we might be able to use to get some more of these ADUs built in Beaverton as part of our housing strategies, and we're excited to see how those conversations keep on going.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, Counselor Teeter. It was a wonderful tour. I've been working with them for some time. I followed up with the city manager about staging a conversation for the next part of this conversation. I do think Beaverton has a unique opportunity to do something really remarkable for people to make homeownership more affordable, and what we know is that they're using a private bank and offering some of these for less than three percent interest, which is like astronomical in this market right now. And so I think we'll have a follow-up conversation, and I will add it to the city manager's work plan. Just like a 4E, we'll add it down there. Appreciate that. All right, any other council new business? All right, with that, we're done.